Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Springfield Animal Control hearing. Today's date is July 31st and the time is now 10:03 a.m. I will begin by introducing my role card, my head laundry. Present, Assistant Lieutenant. Assistant Mayor, President, Congress Everest.
President.
President, Arthur Jones. Also, he, um. Present today is Associate Citizen District, um, Robbers Shooter and Animal Control, Renee Rover Shaw. In that sense, today there are five items that are on the agenda for today, for today. The dog hearings, um. Was requested by.
Civil people events.
Yes, yes. Um, is everyone here? Can you call this right past you? Right, okay, right, yeah, right. Do you prefer to confirm that the evidence that you are about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge? Excellent. The first item on the agenda today is a proper event. Which is the second minute slide was the advert to give back from work laundry, um, the minutes. Work laundry?
Yeah.
Yes, the mail, yes. Everyone is, yeah, yes. And from state earnings, yeah, well, Charles, then. The next, I'm sorry, each member that will be testified today and will be given a penment. And those penments are shared amongst yourselves, are shared with people who will be testified with you. And you also have five minutes or three minutes. And first, and the second item is. The dog name is Nova, at one. Eleven twelve was the street owned by Derek Cook and Dana Oldest. Don't, I'm sorry, don't.
Uh, personally, you know. So what happened, what, why we're here?
All right, so this, uh. This specific hearing stemmed from events. Following a dog fight. Made by this year. Uh, the dog Nova, uh, owned by Derek and Dana. Uh, was bitten by the neighbors, uh, Loki owned by, uh, Mr. Quera. And. Uh, this has kind of been an ongoing issue, both with both dogs. I'm not sure if the dogs own each other, they're neighbors, their. Houses open towards each other. So when the door is open, if one or the other dog is getting out. It seems like they have the single minded purpose once that, once that has occurred. Um, we have had numerous instances, uh. Uh. Just dog versus dog. Fights, um, there have been instances where the dogs being strangled, apples fried. Um, the most recent fight was one sided where it was. Um, only Nova was back and did not, um, help them between each other, each other.
What are videos, pictures of what we submitted?
Um, very. Do you wish to hear or confirm that the evidence that you are about to give is true and old for some time?
Yes, so this is the, um, the bite from June 21st where Loki attacked my dog. My dog was secured on our property, on our kennel. Um, he was outside unsecured, um, as far as I know. Um, Louis's door was not open, he was not outside with the dog. Derek was able to secure both of the dogs. I believe they would take over, put her inside the house, inside of our kennel. We secured Loki on our property because at the time it was an active harassment order between the two of them. So with this cannot come within, I believe, like 10 feet of our property and vice versa. So we called the police, um, and the police escorted Lewis to our property to get the dog. Um, here's a log that I've created, uh. The things that I can show as far as pictures or videos of several times where. Louis's door is open, left open, but he is able to run out at any moment. And so, you know, I understand, like, if you're bringing your road trip inside and the dog slips out or things of that nature. But there's just several times where he is just sitting in the doorway. I know that he does have a shot caller, but I, I know for most times that if you don't have a button, like, right in your hand, then. There isn't much to be able to do. This picture is very small, but this is the same day of this attack. Not even an hour later where he just had him outside unsecured. This picture right here is just to show, we have the tie up. What we've done in previous scenes was on the side door and those are the two doors that, that face each other. We moved it to our front door. I mean, the only thing that is just, you know, with the mailman coming in or, you know, just kids walking up and down the street. It's safe for her to actually be on the side of the house, but. You know, the circumstances, that's just kind of the solution that we've been able to come up with. That's why we're here to provide pictures of our kennel, um, that in our backyard. Kind of off to the side, so it's not necessarily close to the body line as well as how we're able to secure it. With locks and things of that.
Sure, well, it was, by it.
Yes, yes, they are, yeah, we were having issues with emails, so I just wanted to bring up, just, yeah. Sure. Yeah, it's one side, we were having some emails.
They've been a version of not great photo bias.
Yeah, and like I said, here, again, it's just a printout of, of just various times. You know, again, we understand, you know, we both got teenager kids, they might get them out, you know, accidentally, particularly outside. The dog runs out grocery, but a lot of the time it seems preventable, uh. When Loki can be contained, uh, what we do with that tie up is we actually bring the, uh. The lock piece of it inside the house so that she's locked on that before we even open the door. And there have just been several instances that her being secured, but Loki not being supervised, he's been able to run to our property. Um, there's also been several instances where there have been imposed quarantines from T J L. That have not been followed, where the dog is still on our property unleashed or just able to be in that doorway and able to jump out. Um, it didn't necessarily involve our dog, but my grandmother witnessed just a few days ago. Loki was unsecured, two girls were walking in there, uh, Loki attacked the dog. I've got another call, you know, just as a concern system, not necessarily, you know, because of what's going on, but those are just the instances. Um, we actually like dogs, so it's, it's not necessarily just want the dog to be secured so that we both can do what we need to do for our dogs.
So if that is like, I don't know.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that the, the, go ahead, we should go, I'll get the horse on. Yeah, yeah, we, we received one where he is the plaintiff, but I didn't have the document number for the other to confirm. The other one, what the status of, we're actually going to go check. Yeah, so that, that actually made it, you know, because we're not able to just talk to each other, like, hey, you're going to let your dog out, I'll bring mine in. Or we're not able to communicate in that. Okay. A few days ago, we just weren't sure, there's a control one time. Yes.
So I actually had another dog prior to this, it was funny because it's novice. And, and even then, it was maybe seven, eight years ago. And Noah attacked that dog, who had to bring to their hospital, had a big thing on his head and it's been ongoing. Doesn't matter what dog it is, doesn't matter who it is or where, there's always been issues of. Uh, I'm sure you have the records, but like, once I opened up my door, just to give you some context, single father, it's three year old, like, that was bothering me. Like, I do completely on my own, I have my toddler on my own, completely. Um, ironically, it had a lot to do with the extreme water and what happened. Um, but, um, you know, up to you an example, one day I opened up my door, boy went inside the house, I had my kitchen. Four year olds, I was there, she decides to attack my dog, I had to go up to my kitchen, inside my house, my son was there. For once, my son was afraid, he didn't want to come back to my house. And the last instance we had prior to the one that, him attacking my dog, dog was inside my backyard, um. He'd leash, I went to Costco, came back, he was, his space was completely destroyed, didn't know what happened, I looked at my camera, I saw Derek in my backyard, dogs. The dogs had attacked my dog, that's a fair, that's a print to the E R, like fourteen dollars. Um, you know, damage to his eye and everything, like, what am I supposed to do in that, that case, right? Um, I mean, I was, he was leashed up, it was gone. Uh, my dog has been reacting towards other dogs now because of all his acts over in work. My little sister once time was dog, um, dog sitting across, uh, I had it on camera, I called, we called every single time, we even got attorneys involved. Um, she, once she walked my dog on the back, all three of your dogs came up, started to attack my dog, my sister got attacked. There was another time when she walked in front of my house, it's on camera, all three of the dogs came up. They had to yank all three of the dogs out, but, uh, my dog is really not with people, he's great. Great, now, whose other dog gets really anxious because it's had some of these bad experiences. Um, and, uh, the last instance, and I'll tell you, I mean, it's, it's been hard because, uh, you know. I have two toddlers, sorry, I have my, my twelve year old son, and then at one point I had five pets, so I just left it all. Right, four cats and a, a dog, and mind you, I didn't adopt any of these, I had one cat that was. You know, that I asked for, the rest were kind of just up with me. Um, the last time Loki ran out, um, I went downstairs playing my, my kids, you know, the bottom level, two and three year old, I came back upstairs. I saw my, I saw that my, um, my, um, my screen door was, was open and my, my dog had pushed into the door, went outside. That's when I realized he was gone, I, I thought he had ran away, I got a phone call from T J O counter, told me that he was in store. Um, and, uh, and you, all right, the only thing I could do differently is make sure the door closed completely. I like to keep the door open just to have pressure in the house. Um, but, uh, you know, uh, for the most part, I mean, I, there's, there should be records of everything. Uh, my sister's been attacked twice, you know, by their dog, there's been other times where, like I said, uh, my dog is just stationed in the back, just gets attacked. What I could do to avoid that, uh, you know. And, uh, and even the time the dog ran in my house, literally inside my house. I had no idea she was out there, was just one to throw out the trash, it was a dog, where the sound like, I'll start attacking my dog. And I had blood all over my kitchen, whether, uh, call the police, you know, they just, it's just been ongoing. So now it's to the point where, you know, um, even my, it's, it's hard, we have a place set in the back and kids want to stay there because wherever. If we're paying out there, or their dogs are barking, there's been nowhere in its law that have been forced, I followed it in eight and twelve times. These, I have on camera, like, these dogs bark for hours, hours. And, you know, my kids only want to play out there, just never, I think, yeah, so, um, you know, I, I, no, really, I tried calling. I called T J O time many times, my hope was, uh, eventually they would be changing behaviors, uh, I understand that there's. Opportunities to provide to, I mean, a lot of it is just, like I said, I mean, I. Oh, literally, almost every single time, my dog pushed through this door and I wasn't aware of it, I might have been upstairs bathing my kids. Or downstairs doing something, and it's been hard, I've got a real meaning, our dog, you know. But, um, I'm just really, I mean, some of these things are just. Like I said, I, I didn't, if I didn't find my gift, I wouldn't have known, have this way, uh, as, as I had a woman's shot. I, I had to get a babysitter and I was at the E R with my dog at like two o'clock in the morning. Um, and I spent fourteen hundred dollars, which I still have the product advantages for that too. So, I mean, I. Next thing, it's a constant, no matter which dog it is, right, I had another dog in the past, same thing, um, you know, I, I don't. And I don't know, you know, what's. I just ask you, what's next steps, I really want to change something, or we got to do something about it, and also for that, this would be the next step. Um, and, uh, that's what I'm here, and I. Say we're not even malicious or anything, or about, like, I want to be able to just live life and not have to worry about a dog running inside my house, attacking my, uh, the front side of my kids. So, or I want to be able to find my kid in the back, my dog in the backyard, hopefully it's not going to be attacked. You know, uh, so, yeah, that's, that's really it, and, and I assume that you got the record of everything, um, you know, I asked. And, uh, all the, all the, every single time I was. My assumption is that we didn't call, we communicated to your partner. Uh. Well, God. Yep. You don't have to respond, I think, whatever you want to.
We had. It's dog is running, so it's.
We don't know, they get in a bear, damn, sorry.
So, I just want to respond to the incident that he spoke about, where his dog was tied up and he came to the dog, that is this event. Um, uh, for that two year old, my five year old did open up the door, he discovered her outside. So it was more so biased running outside, definitely realized that the dog had arrived. Derek secured, you know, secured her dog because Loki was, she actually saved him because he was choking. On the hill, it's a very steep hill, I, they're actually pushed Loki up the hill because he was. He's still attached to the, um, the hookup, so in that instance, yes, my dog did open up the door. But there was mutual to both dogs, it was not a one sided attack, and again, Derek actually saved one of the children because we had a dog. Previously died from that same manner of slipping and falling. Um, yeah, so. All of the instances, again, we're not looking to, you know, gash anyone or, or anything of that effect, it's just a thing of. We like to open up our screen door as well for share, but we also know that our dog is strong enough to bust through that door. What we've done is taken baby gates and we want to open our door and put it on the inside so that if there is a dog, again, if it goes upstairs or whatever the case is. They're not busting through that, we're just asking for both precautions to be thought about. We want to have pressure coming through the house as well on a nice day, but we also have to understand that our dogs are not mutual allies. These are bigger dogs that can bust through a screen door if they want, they really need to.
So are. Do you want to, you drive separately?
Yeah, but yes, you want to.
Okay, yeah.
So you're, you do both, uh, the first conditions for first, uh, for, uh. Uh, this, this one setting, the next one, both, uh, for. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that was.
That is, respect.
Okay, can you say off?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did put any conditions?
Yes, they have to be found out, nuisance is dangerous, but then we have to, to conditions, but. Coming from that, that, that many, but it's, it's like a mutual, uh, situation, that's like they like.
Yes, but whether we mutually, whether we mutually, most, yes. Do we all deal with the per.
Yes, yes, so, so this one, yes.
Not so many, even though it's a second level, but I just want to know, but so, even a nuisance. We can do.
Yes, yes.
And that allows to, you know, video of situations we choose.
Yeah, if you think that a list, it's a catch all for, with, that's a lot, but.
Yes.
You'll be the problem. You're ready, I'm inclined, oh, thank you. Okay, uh. Yeah, well, it's your backyard. Those restrictions.
And John's home, have a flower, or configuration, um, have a picture.
It's a patch and it's all the size of this room and the property line is kind of straight down the middle, split the driveway with a little bit of grassy area. A little bit of grassy, but it's, it's shared. It's the sun, yeah.
The doors are a lot of. If you want.
It's too private.
You don't have to solve it, we just have some conditions, yeah, probably, but not be found, you know, only, but other, uh, aren't these usually strictly, uh.
I would recommend, you know, a, you should, I would recommend a, um, muzzle on the outside of the. Use the baby gate and using the kennel when she's outdoors just to protect her from. Any, any mishaps. Uh, both those are already let's, and I'll, you know, shop.
I'll show you, maybe that's happening, ever second, bed, board, laundry, uh, the multiple. Yes. Assistant Everest. Andre.
Yes.
Yes, come here, yes. The limits.
Yes.
What's Charles, that says motion pass.
Hearing, we used the next to me, we are not gone, it's the same, the, okay, there, it's a lot of both, right, okay.
He's still tired of the hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
If he's agreeing, he can just move kind of along, but that's.
I do, you're important, you're going to be one of them. That, yeah, what basically you said, yeah, yeah, I guess, yes, for the circumstances.
I don't have much more to add, I guess, and I guess, you guys, you know, kind of, you know, you're, you know. For, yeah, there, and, uh, I mean, I didn't think it was gonna happen. Yeah. It's mutual, yeah.
Perfect, if they actually sue me.
Yeah, it's like a comment, yeah. So, no, we can't work, you know, we can't stop, yeah, we can't, didn't, but the, 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 the laws of, the entire dogs are off. Yeah, outside, they should be, well, leash anyways, the bird, let them play, and the dogs not, you know, to be, to be perfectly, that be done. Your advice is, you have to regard them in, you know. And neither case, it was, um, to the point where you both have either dog, you the nice, which is, uh, for real. But I don't think we're at that, it's mutual comment between, and you don't get into the restraining order between you and that type of stuff. They live next to each other, they figure out how to manage, yeah, uh, it's not, you know, my point, you, and that doesn't matter, I mean, it's like that. I mean, songs like that, uh, look, I got a gate, they don't have a gate, that seems, that's, those are, their interest should be all controlled. But they need to be, you know, because it obviously, the, the children. And, uh, but you can't solve it, at some point, it sounds like, but, uh, usually, I mean, there's no, it's a name. It sounds like some way, this probably like, this report, you, you're not restraining, we're starting to, maybe, this is, this is how this, any type of things that will, they. Not just in, since super danger hearing, uh, and hopefully, uh, I think, together, they can try to get out, they could be here. But there are license fee.
Um, if your dog is, I will just say that if your dog did muzzle outside.
I made. I, I mean, I made preparation, including, yeah.
So that people save, because if these muzzles decided, I didn't think of that. It was why I said, I was going to use it, like, you want to cut them. Um, they may do, I'm like, they have. People, though, that's all over, so they should save her, if you can, I'll move them out of the water.
Yeah.
There, you have to, so it's easy, because they just do that, that, keep her safe from, like, from, you know, the yard, again.
Yeah, that's what.
Yes, so the bracket is getting.
If you put a dog outside, yeah, if he leaves, I mean, it's not, yeah, but if he leaves the dog outside, muzzled, yeah, then it's not handled, and it's, so, but.
They're usually to the asking muzzles, for that, but I mean, it's more that. Um, if it is, uh, while the vehicle comes into the yard or another dog or any, well. He has no way of protecting himself other than just being, of our, your, your presence.
And that's, is, we, we, we can put the conditions on, you know.
I just read, um, read it, so.
Hopefully. You got it all, you got it.
I don't know if free is a dangerous dog, given for a dog named Loki, at eleven sixteen, with the street. Owned by Louis Rivera, requested by D L one.
Yeah, so basically the same, in the previous testimony, these are neighbors, they have properties that open into each, facing each other's yards. Um, so if we're going to make a determination, I recommend muzzle, acquire a kennel for the safety of the animal, he is outdoors. Um, and then also, um, baby gates of some other kind of, of barrier to prevent from being able to access the screen door, uh. There, this dog, uh, is already, is already, he is also up to date in this sense.
Possessions being.
Yes.
Everyone, what's, Andre, yes. The mail, yes, I'll say, yes, yes. All can. Have, uh, other conditions, that the dog muzzled, um, and a little to acquire a kennel and give a baby gate. And a little out fire, a kettle and give a gate. Thanks.
I recommend fast critical style model. Uh, we can order them online, you'll have. Or how you go to some bar play, can't actually drink. But it'll keep. That from eating things that they shouldn't, to keep her from. Fighting or using that. His or his first, um, go to. Um. And usually that does entirely through the training period, if you want to get confused, then use to have the, so they're not. Stress over that. It's. But the neighboring, they have. If you look up after those style models. They have a watch, they, unlike the box models, they don't hold the dogs much, but they just put up basically change. The versions, the working job to have those on. And. If so that they don't get in trouble. They set a lot of speed on, they can take it going along, so maybe. Or they know what, whatever. Funny, more. That patient. Thank you.
Good one. For girls, uh. Thank you.
I have a number four, we have a big good dangerous dog here in Hong Kong, uh, three Aston Street, four, five, and a rancher. From valley.
She was like, please, last.
I can't.
Yes.
Hello.
Even one over here.
They need all here.
I do remember.
They dealt with it themselves, hopefully. Or they didn't, that, so we just make it, it's also, we don't need make a vote, just we had an office.
Yeah, I don't know, but you don't say that.
So just.
Let me try to move this to the next.
Yeah, let's, let's see if they got, if they get noticed, if, if anyone get that.
Random letter delivery and didn't receive any return from. Like, and then get a mail back from, I would assume. But I saw it occur from either party. Out. No finding.
And finding, yeah. That there'll have to be another, then they'll have thirty days for the end of the, we have that yet.
Motion.
Okay.
But if.
Motion for no findings by word laundry, second by word Edwards. On no findings, male, yes. For laundry.
Yes.
On the evidence.
Yeah.
Yes, on the level. Right, which has happened, motion back. I have number five, we have an instance from again for dogland memory at eighteen fifty, I wasn't there, had been submitted by a man, the. The first annual sound of July. Based on that, yeah. Later, here's a, this has been a ongoing situation. Dylan with a very sinister. A, I think. That to give us the break back then, cause. To report that my dog is in my yard, jail cards have come out several times, um, that's a. Double jail card, uh, numerous amount of times saying that I don't base it properly, what I swear on you. When that's for, uh, evidence or. What is called. Uh, the picture, she doesn't provide timestamps, um. She's, from my understanding from officers, she was continuously contacting them, causing the situation. Um, to the point now that a month ago. Well, she put off my four, five year old twins and my seven year old stepdaughter, um, two friends seen pushing my fence. Attempted to break it, she's pushing my fence anyway. She broken my fence, um, she pulled out. The metal barrier once she did break the fence again, after I had. Just got a, um, you fix it, that was deemed safe, uh, made of this year, I believe, to me, this year, last year.
Nice.
Yeah, last year, um, and it's safe. It's been a ongoing battle back and forth, um, she had been very verbally aggressive. In her own yard. There has been some very erratic behavior on a daily basis, um. Suddenly, what's the last incident of hers, important that my dog. Removed because then I got tired of replacing my fence, because it's my fence at the end of the day, she refuses to. Create her own fence or buy her own fence for her own reason, I mean. Um, she contacted jail counters on Sunday, saying that my dog removed the metal barrier, so I got to buying all the fence. I was tired of buying it, because. Like it cost me money and time, I'm tired of dealing with this, um. I put the baby gate of my children, not baby, I'm sorry, the frame of the bottom of my daughter's, my twin daughter bed. In between, so I still see my dog. And my dog didn't get through, she ended up pushing the gate through, contacted jail counters and informed them that my dog was in her yard. When they asked for the time then that day, she refused, um, she put down on officers, multiple officers will not even go up and respond to her because of the level of aggression. Uh, and I'm sorry, I'm a little upset, I'm just so. Tired of them with this woman, I do not speak with her, we do not exchange words, uh, Sunday when my fiance. Fixed the fence, her husband was flipping off, using very vulgar language, uh, we are a family, I said, for what to do. I have six kids right now, um, I'm seven, one right now, um. This has been a common thing, my own children don't feel comfortable, I have, I had a beautiful garden in my backyard that we barely even go out to water because. Of the consistent. Language that is used on that property, I am to the point like. I didn't ask to have it for me to do a harassment order. I am to the point like, this is ridiculous, I have a huge yard. And this woman will literally, she has no grass on, on the side of it because she used. Leaves and debris to block it, saying that my fence was unstable, she consistently tried to push it over, um. And there is no grass there, but yeah, she'll take the weed whacker daily, this daily that I take with this, daily. Going with the weed whacker and. Using the weed whacker to distract her dog, to get the dog's attention, um, this was an incident from. I think a year and a half or maybe two years back, where I am. Being honest about this, the fence was, um, under, right, so there was some holes and she obtained a husky, um. And. I guess it started wearing tearing, so it did break down, there was some gaps in between the fence, um, you were able to. Redo the fence and I think you probably have to, just, they did.
Um, no, I didn't bring them for this hearing, just because this is.
This is separate from.
I mean, this is just. Recent, like I just started this as a new hearing, because the theory, you met the conditions with the previous. Hearing, so there was nothing I can actually do. Action, other than saying for your dog being loose.
Yeah, uh, which every time guys come, they, she swears that. It's a dangerous dog, and you guys come into my home, I don't know. But. Dogs really friendly, um, there was the past incident of when she hit the dog, the shovel, he went in the yard. It's actually a sheep, but I always follow it, so all the time, um. So when she goes into the, when she went to stay there, about two years ago, she did it with the shovel. Uh, and that's what led up to every not liking. So this is because of the situation, and now it's just becoming like. Really mind blowing, um, Monday night I had to call the police first time, because I don't ever call the police, I'm very transparent, but. The idol, that's just not me, like. You be your, it's a, I'm not bothering you. You have your own situation, side of her husband apologizing. Positions.
Sorry, are you on that?
Yes.
Oh, so we went opposite. Yeah, or, um. Did you, the question is, okay, so, um. Yeah, so. You, that you should come first and say why you. Why you requesting again. If you could, uh. When anything could, could, uh, get, uh, brought down.
So, um.
I apologize, I didn't realize that. But I started listening.
Um, all right, so. Obviously, so we had the previous hearing on July eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Um, and at that time, it was just. Deemed that she would have to install the fence properly and then it would be inspected. Um.
Was it installed properly, inspected?
Yeah, I mean. We're not fence inspectors, so it was, they, they knew fence wasn't. And the fence was installed. New segments and it was secured to our knowledge, but obviously like a lot of. I don't know, I didn't do about building and or fence inspection, um, I could do a countless, but those are typically very different types of. All of them. Detailed.
Basically, it was. Oh, sure.
Yes, yeah, it had, uh. All the panels were present, you can see the new panels that. They put up, um. There was no. Condition stating that she had removed the old panels, so then the new panels. Were up and when, you know, when trapped, they were sturdy, um. So from that point on, you know, as far as we were concerned, the conditions of the previous hearing were met, um. And the, the previous year didn't mention taking a book key or anything else, so. I didn't really have much actionable from a hearing, so for me, um, so then on May. Twenty ninth of this year. Um, the dog did break out, animal control responded. Um. There is a video of the dog in. The. The yard on location for.
And so. Able to give you a video. Well.
That was in the thirty days. May twenty ninth is happening in the thirty days. Um. But that was what started this initial process, I reached out to. Robert for advice that other places related to public data hearing. That the conditions were met, and so then after hearing back, I reached out, um. June third. Asking if they would like a hearing. Um, and. They responded on July sixth, stating they would. Um, I didn't indicate at that point, but we would need. Evidence. Um, yeah, more recent than the previous call. Did you miss that? We did receive. Um. The videos that I sent to you guys.
Yeah, that was.
Um. But none of them, so none of the videos themselves are timestamped, so I don't have any way to show. When those videos would have. I'm sorry.
You go out or festival near the date.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so none of the videos were, were timestamped. Um. And so I just passed that along to the committee and, um. Then obviously the more recent issue of last weekend. Um, there was a several emails that I had to pass along to the committee. With the photos from officers and the notes from the officer that didn't respond. Um. And I don't know if. But. We never received with, you know, that it was very good quality video, but there was a. One of the children had a videos, some. One or something tampering with the fence, but because they're a child. It was in house since from a very far distance. Um. I don't know. Like possibly she could have shared it with you directly, but I didn't personally. Um.
First of all, I take my own very serious, I'm a two time combat veteran. Okay, I think it's very immature that she's calling me a sinister neighbor, every claim that she has made on. Every single one has been false, I don't even know, I don't, I said to my fiance, I don't even know what she's gonna say today. First of all, hitting her dog with the shovel, she has no vet bills, if that happened to my dog, and I said this the last hearing. Where's the vet bills, where's the damage, her dog was never hurt, and second of all, I can do whatever I want in my yard, whether it's raking, weed whacking, or whatever, I own that property. Who cares if I have grass wherever, that, that has nothing to do with anything, okay, second of all, I don't ever swear at her kids, in fact, I'm the neighborhood babysitter, okay. Just this past weekend, I had six kids at my house, all ranging from ages five to nine, so how dare you say that about my character? Okay, I knew she was gonna come up here and pull out these lies, and I don't know what, what this whole. I didn't interrupt her once, see, this is what I. So, um. Also, as far as the videos being timestamped, my, it's not like I have a wifi camera ways or something, I have ADT. Full camera systems in my front, sides and backyard, so every single claim that she just made about me, I wanna know the proof. Because on my phone, I can go back to any date and get the video from that date anytime that the doc, get time, I wanna see all these things she said I'm doing. How dare you do that, how dare you come up here and she's trying to break my character down to make you guys portray me in a certain way. Well, I guess I have it, and as far as the standards being met on the last hearing, thank God it was recorded. So the, the, the stipulation. Was that she'd get the fence inspected by a city inspector. And she had two weeks from the day of the hearing, it's reported, two weeks from the day of the hearing to do it where she would be fined, none of that ever happened. Her boyfriend, okay, crawls over the fence, again, I have cameras, over the fence, picks up my scrap wood and drills it all in. Random, so her yard barges through the fence over and over and over on a daily basis, it creates holes. Nonstop, okay, and all her boyfriend, all they had to do, if it can't stay in the yard, then put it online, if it can't stop barking, then muzzle it. It's so, it's harassment at this point, I can't go in my yard and do yard work, let alone have people over, and as far as, uh. Me damaging, uh, she said, you said her son or video or has a video of me damaging the fence, where is that video, where is the proof today? That's what I wanna know, okay, and also, she wants to call about talking, calling the cops, she called. Sunday morning, I called because her dog yet again got through the fence, because what she's saying, she put up, she even admitted, was a mattress bed from her son. That's not a fence, that's not an inspected fence, she even said, yeah, my dog can see through it and can bite just enough to nip my son and my dog, I have a one year old dog. Um. And it's funny, my one year old dog is. Always on the line, but I stopped taking it off the line this past month because it's not fair, my son, talk about going outside, your kids playing on a trampoline. On the still back to other side of the fence, my kid won't even go fifty feet from the back fence, he's so scared of that dog. And it's friendly when you're allowing somebody in the house that's a lot different than meeting an impressive dog at a back fence that's blocked away. That dog viciously barks at that fence, it breaks pieces, I've never seen a dog do this, it tries all its main mission. From morning to night to break that fence, that dog cannot be let out to use the bathroom without causing chaos. And I, I'm so flustered right now, I, I don't even, I don't even know where to begin with any of this, this. I, I actually have a few things I'd like to say, oh, again, so I called on Sunday, so. May twenty ninth, it's funny how that these videos aren't dated, right, but suddenly, the day that it happened was May twenty ninth, the cops were called. I had said, me and Renee had a miscommunication and that it was literally like a week short of thirty days, she had said, okay, I'm gonna reach out to the legal team, whatever, great. Great, so if the video wasn't time stayed damped or whatever, then what what is, I could have made that up, said that was last week then. If I'm putting these, and if again, if if she wants to stay on, uh. Not time stamping things, okay, then don't take it from me, I'll give you full access to mine, you can contact them yourself and I'll tell them that. You guys have permission, sadly, I can't wait for any video, okay, that's how confident I am. And also, I had so, she, oh, I never called the police, right, she, she. She lies so much, uh so much, to to say that I'm. I am so friendly with every neighbor, I have phone numbers, I talk to my neighbors on a daily basis. How dare you, how dare you say I sit in my backyard and just vulgar language and. That is so embarrassing, I've never hold my character to that standard ever, okay? And so because her dog yet again, so it was the May twenty ninth and I called the cops. And it was actually, I don't know if it was June sixth, but that's the the. Uh time that the officer that came to my house and which again, my brother's a police officer, I respect the blue. I would never yell at them or be disrespectful to them in any manner, even if we didn't see eye to eye, so. Um, I've called the cops so many times on her dogs that. They literally, I've had cops saying, no, 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 I'm not even going back there, because I've shown them the videos. And the cops are like, no, I'm not going back, I'm not a dog person, I'm gonna make a report off. And I always said it, please make the report because I need it for the hearing, okay, we'll do that, and then. Again, every time I've ever called was for an absolute dire meat. I went to go put my dog out Sunday at one thirty-two P M and the her dog was at my back. Door, like she said, she's got a big backyard, I got a big backyard, do you know how long that got? My family has never stepped in her yard, like boyfriend, my dogs, my dog, I've never interrupted her. My dog, it's it's funny how the same fence, if I'm breaking it, my dog is one years old, okay? How is my dog never been in her yard and the same exact fence is blocking it from coming into mine? How is that possible then, every scene alive, because I'm a responsible dog owner, my dog won't even use the bathroom. Without me going out there with my dog because of that fence and her dog, that's why. I don't even allow my dog to go out there and use the bathroom without my supervision, and again, all on camera. And so then, when I had called Sunday morning on, Sunday afternoon at one thirty-two on her, showed the video proof. The the cops did come out to my house, I don't understand what she's been talking about, I talked to them. And then all of a sudden, Sunday night, at ten, ten oh eight P M. I got cops sitting in front of my house and I said, oh, that's weird, I was cleaning my living room, shaking out rugs. And I, that's why I saw a cop, and then, so I said, oh, that's weird, I wonder, is the house next to me, they have issues, right? So I wonder if it's for the house next to us. So then I go inside and I look out my back window and there's cops lining, walking up and down the back fence with a flashlight. So I'm thinking, oh my gosh, she tried to say I did something in the fence, again, I can show you. All of Sunday on my camera, twenty-four seven, I don't even have to edit nothing, you can see it twenty-four seven, okay? Now, here's the funny part, the cops so much as didn't even knock on my door, if it was a crime. And if I had vandalized something and she called and they inspected it themselves, why didn't I get a knock on my door? If I if I was watching a movie and didn't even know or wasn't paying attention or wasn't, you know, I wouldn't even known that she called, no idea. There was no, she is a liar and she's only turning the heat up because I'm br- I brought her to this hearing is the only reason.
Thank you.
I have a lot that I could say, but. As far as the fence and the dog and everything else.
So, again, I was at the police on Monday night, so like she said. And once again, there's no police documentation of any of the other. Alright, I'm still, I just want to be hold the very much.
Can I admit the suggestion that we just do another former, but if he secured by. Me, inspected by an actual fencing company.
That goes in that portion of the area, um and the control.
So I have, I mean, I have, I'll offer. Three options that I see as being increasingly. At least, yeah, by a by a fence company and having that inspected, the other would be. Installing a barrier or a smaller area where she can be outside but not have access to the full yard. So she's not getting, or the third. The third would be a channel, but I think that the dog has, they have like a sliding door, so like the dog has access to come and go, so I don't. That would require more management. Um, ideally like the best fix could just be installing a thirty new fence, real fence inspected. By the fence company that's getting paid to install it.
Don't control if you're gonna invest with every pieces of evidence you can say in a quick release, so you you can't control yourself. Then that just is, that speaks to the credibility of everything you say, but you can't control yourself. Doesn't that doesn't matter, so what now should you do, just be like, let us do our job. And whether you comply with whatever we say, that's your choice, at some point, this problem, this is not a problem to solve anyway. So I have to even ask some questions, who owns the fence? You own the fence, then that's responsible for the fence, she doesn't have to, if you have a fence. You take the fence out, we are gonna make a determination based on what's been presented, we'll present those conditions to you. But you choose to comply with them or not, it's not up to us, once we've made our rulings. You can go wherever you want to go or not to do it, at some point, the city can take you to judgment court. And they will work you or not work you, they don't deal with, we can only do so much, what else can do to that? And let people lie here or not, or comply with or not, that be your. Those were all ties, the bottom line is. That's one, but we can't do that, you can't control yourself and. You know, right back in the manager's stress, just to deal with the dog, and.
Each other in system, whereas a dog is just physically restrained from having access to that. That area of the fence. So I feel like any of those four options would solve this problem. The channel would require a little bit more effort on family's part, because they need to bring it off, is it be out to the channel back in? Um. From indoors to the the.
I wish we were like a jury, but we can say we even said questions, but we're not, but let's let's be honest with you, that we got two worrying parties here. We can solve all these problems, because responsible dog owners care about whether it's a animal or somebody else's yard or not. Whether you hit somebody's head off the shelf or not, once the dog's on my property and I kill the dog. I can shoot the dog, then it's the law will deal with that, whether I had a legal right to do it, but the thing is, that this fence that is here. Is not acceptable, it's not, it's any cause, the the other property can build fence. If if that was solved the problem and if we even started with it, my recommendation would be the other party. Not the one who owns the fence, but the other party would build their own fence, so that they know that it's secure. The fence is there, it's not functional, and that was part of the original order, that there be a functional fence.
Installed, those were new panels about say years, pegged off the standards.
Two new panels next to a fence that's riding, it doesn't, it's not functional and that's not acceptable, so whatever, what my recommendation would be. Minimum is for the earthy offensive, a channel is not going to solve the problem because. Now we're talking about, we can put a fence and a a channel in there, the reason we're having rules is because people can't be responsible. And I'm, and they can take both sides, nobody in this situation for being responsible, nobody's still in their house and moving away. But you got a problem and just by human behavior, it's, there wouldn't even be a hearing, if people would just be responsible. So whatever condition we put on, generally we put the fence on, I don't, a channel you can say there's gonna be, kind of they're not gonna use it. Because they go for the title, whatever, but you can, many, I'll support. Any of the most egregious things that you wanna put into this, I'll support voting favor of, because I believe that at the end of the day. The simplest thing is for somebody to put a fence up, and the second most simplest thing is for people to be able to. We can't do the neighborly part when you force the bed, and the owner of the fence is already existing there. It is not functional and it has to be replaced, whether you choose to do it or not, if the other party wants to build a fence, that's fine too, because that put out to be grace. The barrier that's necessary.
So, um. I make a new motion with the obvious new sense.
You know, he's already gained since at the last.
That is here, they could have chosen to escalate it, so she's just keeping heaven.
Or laundry, yes. Little, yes, also climbing.
Yes.
Another condition is to have a fence installed by a fence company, dirty.
Oh, and I thought we can't tell him what's what fence company, but they, the fence needs to be properly installed by a fence.
By.
By a fence.
Or they just had change, they now they're gonna say that they want to.
Well, you're gonna have to keep on exploring first, and meanwhile, she just sits back and ha ha breaks my face and raises it. Uh, also, um.
Yes, update, no. The dog is not spayed.
So my recommendation is, if um also um, Roshan is to have a fence properly installed. By a fence company and it's like clear that the dog registered as well as to be stated.
I'm not told any other conditions that need to be used with rights for the audience, just go ahead.
Honestly, I don't think I suggest it by this time, but she don't pay it anymore.
Yeah, exactly, she said, but.
Was she? Uh, I think we would have to come back. So she's gonna get delivery plus twenty-one days. I mean, I don't know what, and obviously she would have to be in communication, if she actually be planning on doing the fence, like that might not be a real timeframe for a fence company. But like that's, but of course she would have, so, yeah, she would have show proof and then we, you know, like bring that to the committee and say like, hey, this is what's going on. Um, she'll have to bring proof if it's not within their timeline, I know in my defense.
Thirty days. Um, thirty days.
You receive an estimate thirty days.
And then, okay, completion within. Sixty days or be in communication, like I mean.
And she's coming, you know, you can tell, but if she comes on the twenty-ninth, on the thirty, with an estimate, you know, she's not being compliant. If she calls you a week later, says, I got Casey was here and get an estimate, then that's your show's move. I mean, they don't like each other, I mean, you know, people like, who's who's breaking fence?
Is that fair to say within thirty days?
Yeah, yeah, okay. And I mean, all she had to do is be in communication, she knows how to reach me.
So are the conditions, outside Edwards?
Yes.
For laundry?
Yes.
Well, yes, that's the plan.
Yes.
Conditions, fast.
All these cases.